The reorganization meeting here January 2nd, 2024 has come to work. So great seeing all you guys. Let's get to work. We're going to proceed right away with swearing in the new county speaker and our controller. If anyone's wondering why I'm not getting sworn in, it was done yesterday.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So we're going to go ladies first. Let me get Gibson.
Aye.
Aye. To meet Gibson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That you will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
Of America. And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And that you will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duty.
The duty.
Of your appointment.
Of my appointment.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the council.
Of the council.
Of the City of Chester.
Of the City of Chester.
With dignity and fidelity.
With dignity and fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Let's keep the party going.
That works, that's it.
Right hand.
Right hand, you got your left hand. Aye.
Aye. Pray green.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That you will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Of the City of Chester.
Of the City of Chester.
And that you will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of your appointment.
Of my appointment.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the council.
Of the council.
Of the City of Chester.
Of the City of Chester.
With dignity and fidelity.
With dignity and fidelity.
Congratulations.
You don't have to call to a dealer up. All right, now sorry for that.
Aye.
Aye, Cory Taylor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That you will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Of the City of Chester.
Of the City of Chester.
And that you will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of your office.
Of my office.
As the city controller.
As the city controller.
Of the City of Chester.
Of the City of Chester.
With dignity and fidelity.
With dignity and fidelity.
Congratulations.
That's a power call there.
Today, yes.
I said five minutes. I'm sorry. There's a lot going on here today. All right, we're going to move on with the, uh, with the order. Now, in the first.
All right, we're going to start with the prayer and everything to open up the team. We're going to open up with prayer, followed by the pledge and allegiance. O God, the might, wisdom, and justice, through whom authorities rightly administer laws enacted in judgment decree, assist us, beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen.
Amen.
Aye.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we're going to have public comments on agenda items only. If anybody would like to make a public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Here I am getting ahead of myself. Roll call.
Counselors Gibson, present. West.
Present.
Green.
Present.
Mayor Roots.
Present.
Public comment on agenda items only. Three minutes. Is there anyone?
We don't have a gentleman. They're on podium.
Nope. Nope.
Oh, they came out later. Yeah, I handed a stack to that way so they can hopefully go around.
Okay.
You're welcome. Maybe I'll put some to the back. Maybe they can go front or backwards.
While you're looking at it, I'll just, uh, go through what the attendees. Authorized approval to accept council members' resignations. Authorized approval to fill the vacancy in the office of council member. Authorized approval to appoint city solicitor, assistant city solicitor, deputy mayor, city clerk, and appoint acting city clerk. The appointment of police commissioner, and request for proposal for the positions of city solicitor and assistant city solicitor. Is there anyone who would like to make any comment? On the agenda items. Seeing none. We'll move on.
So then, uh, mayor and council, the next, um...
Is there a motion to authorize approval to accept council members' resignation?
Yes. I approve or make a motion to authorize the approval to accept council members' resignation that on January 1st, 2024, the resignation of Stefan Roots as a council member of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, is hereby accepted, and the office held by said council member is deemed vacant at 10:00 AM, January 2nd, 2024.
A second.
Any questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Now, the next resolution is a motion to authorize approval to fill the vacancy in the office of council member. Before we proceed with that motion, the mayor and council have agreed that, since there are three nominations to fill that seat for appointment, that those three individuals will have a three-minute opportunity per person to address the public in council.
Christopher Garrett.
Mayor, councilmen, city officials, friends, and family. My name is Christopher Garrett, and I stand before you as your nominee for Chester City Council. For those of you who may not know me, I am a 26-year-old lifelong resident of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania. I graduated from Chester High School in 2014. I am alum of Alcorn State University by way of Howard University with a degree in political science. I am also currently employed with Broadridge Financial Solutions as a senior associate. I am choosing to seek appointment for this position because I would like to help resolve some of the longstanding problems of this city, such as the lack of economic opportunities, financial instability, and environmental issues. I believe I am the right person for the job because I bring to council a wide range of skills that I've gained over the years. This includes an in-depth understanding of the law and its applications, an advanced, uh, understanding of accounting skills, and leadership skills necessary to accomplish these goals. These skills were acquired from my time interning with Judicial Attorney's Office of Delaware County, law school, my professional experience, and while serving in various leadership positions for community service organizations in the city. In preparation for this position, I've spent many hours reading through hundreds of pages of court documents, becoming familiar with the receiver's recovery plan, and spending plenty of time with our mayor to understand the exact state that Chester is in and the role that we have to make as council to move the city forward. To fix the problems that our city faces, I would like to launch a marketing campaign that helps make Chester more attractive to outside investors, while also working with local businesses to help grow our economy. To help fix our financial issues and our instability, I would work closely with the receiver and council to come up with a plan that is both sustainable and establishes preventative measures against bankruptcy. Chester residents have faced a number of environmental issues over the years which have caused health concerns. I would like to work with our state legislators and local organizations to ensure that Chester is always a safe place to breathe. Our residents have made it clear that they are ready for change. That's exactly why each and every one of the council members and our mayor sit upon this day as today. They have put their faith and trust in you to make the decisions needed for this city, and I stand before you as another agent of change, ready to push the city forward in the right direction. I stand ready to represent our voters' mandate for change, to support our mayor's vision to move the city forward, and bridge the gaps to create unity among our city officials so we can move this city forward together. Thank you.
Next, Shaquon Davis.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And good morning. Congratulations to our newly-elected members of council and our mayor. My name is Shaquon Horace Davis. I'm a 26-year-old resident of Chester, the great city of Chester. I'm a 2015 graduate of Chester High with honors. I'm a 2019 graduate of Renaissance College with a master's, um, excuse me, with a major in mass media and criminal, mass media and communications with a double minor in coaching and athletic training and pre-law. I'm here before you today to say thank you and congratulations for this wonderful opportunity to even be nominated to serve this great city of Chester. I'm here to stand before you today to say the reason for being the man of this job is because I have been a public servant my whole life. I'm honored and blessed and humbled to have my family here supporting me. Honorable mention to my uncle Horace Z. Davis, who I'm humbly named after, who has served our community for over six years. As the magistrate of the district judge, as well as my father, Wilden Horace Davis, who currently serves as one of three magistrate of the district judges here in our City of Chester. My whole life, I knew nothing but the City of Chester. This city has made me the young man that you see standing before you today. I have been nothing but an advocate, a supporter, and of the growth of our great city of Chester. I'm here to say the knowledge that I've accumulated through working under multiple political administrations, serving under multiple, um, state representatives, and serving my community, I'm the right man for the job because I'm here to show that the growth that we need in this community comes about through community engagement and hard work and teamwork. Nothing can get done by itself. Rome wasn't built in a day, and it wasn't built by one person. We have to work together to build the Chester that we would like to see. That's what I'm here. As a certified project manager, I learned that everything can be incorporated into one umbrella to serve our people. The service that I'm looking to do is to change the City of Chester for the better. Whatever that looks like, service from our people. The people decide what needs to be done in our city. The people who live in our city want, want, we're, we're in control. We're, we're in control. We're in charge. So I'm here to listen to the people of the city because without the people of the city standing in front of me, I would not be here today. So I just want to say thank you for, for this opportunity to come speak. I don't have much to say other than I'm willing and ready to serve my community and all of you standing before me today. Thank you very much.
Third and final nominee, Andrew Nelson.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. All right, as you heard, my name is Andrew Nelson. I'm also a lifelong Chester resident. I graduated from Chester High in 2004. I joined the Marine Corps in 2006, and I spent 10 years on active duty serving our country. During that time, I learned transferable skills such as working together, uh, doing more with less, being able to think on the fly, and being able to flee in situations that are less than comfortable, to say the least. Um, when I got out of Marine Corps, I went and worked for the Department of Veteran Affairs, uh, specifically in the National Cemetery Administration where I was an administrative officer. In there, I began to develop the foundation of finances and administration on a large scale. We had a budget of over $200 million, and we managed all of the six national cemeteries in the area. When I left the National Cemetery, I went and worked in Yaden with my goal of honing my skills as far as learning local government, almost as if it was on a job train. I was part of a municipal management team with Mafie Nichols, Miranda Simpson, and Tenu Moss. There, we managed Yaden Borough during the transition time where they were gapped from borough management. I learned all of the inner workings of city, city government there, and when I left there, I began working at the Stormwater Authority here in Chester. The goal was to be able to do work and help the community as far as infrastructure is concerned, knowing and understanding that Chester has the oldest infrastructure. I went through a process of learning infrastructure, learning budgeting as I am the CFO, learning financing, and learning, more importantly, how to build coalitions to get things done within the community. As it stands today, I want to put my nomination in for city council. Um, I do have the background. I have an MBA from Temple University and an undergrad in business from Penn State. I have quietly worked for the last seven years since I've been out of the Marine Corps, behind the scenes, ensuring that our community can move forward. I want to take those relationships and those skills that I have acquired over the last seven years, and I want to build on them to work with this coalition, coalition of, of people that we've just elected to be able to bring change in the community. I think we can do that by ensuring that we're working with the youth and bolstering positions with the police department so we can grow on the progress that we've made within policing. I think that our future of community policing will go with building relationships with the children so that we can police our own neighborhood, so we can stop having outside people come in and continue to police us. I'd like to see growth as far as economic development. I'd like to use my background in business as well as the relationships to build with the local businesses so that we can bolster our community on the economic front and as far as making Chester a tourist attraction like our, our mayor spoke of. There are a lot of history. There's a lot of history in Chester, all the way from Martin Luther King with the seminary here, uh, Ethel Waters. There was a large amount of entertainers here and scholars that have come through, and I like to highlight that history, show Chester as a tourist attraction, be able to grow off of that. And furthermore, and most importantly, I already have experience working with the receiver, and I want to continue to work with the receiver so that way we can continue to fix Chester's financial problems.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes, that's my time. All right.
Before we move forward, that was an example of some of the great young talent that we have. Let me finish. Some of the great young talent that we have in this city who recognize that it's their future. This city is, is, is in their hands. So we're really excited to see the young folks that we have up here, the young folks sitting out there who want to be a part of city government. Thank you, guys, for your presentations. They were superb. Next one.
Is there a motion to authorize approval to fill the vacancy in the office of council member?
I make the motion that it does hereby appoint Shaquon Davis, a Chester resident, as council member of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, to serve in and hold such office for the unexpired term of said Stefan Roots, whose term expires the first Monday of January 2026 pursuant to 11 PACSA Section 108 of law.
Second.
Any questions? Any comments?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
No.
This is hard. It is. I thought we were supposed to decide.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a historic moment. You have your phones on. Please put them on vibrate. Please take pictures. I am more than honored to not just continue to serve this city, but to swear in Shaquon Horace Davis to city council, which is my son. Let me be the first to say why I had this opportunity. Is that the City of Chester is in great hands. Great hands. The constituents of our city are in great hands with this new administration. And I know, trust God. Trust God, yeah. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Listen to the judge. Repeat after me. I, Shaquon Horace Davis, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Chester, and excuse me, and the Charter of the City of Chester.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And that I will discharge the duties of my appointment.
And I will discharge the duties of my appointment.
As a member of council.
As a member of council.
Of the City of Chester.
Of the City of Chester.
With dignity.
With dignity.
And fidelity.
And fidelity.
Congratulations.
All right, you can't choose your family, but this is it, y'all. This is what we're running with. Here we are. We're all here. Exciting times. Exciting times. Here comes my chief of staff. Congratulations, Mr. Davis. And moving on, next one.
Is there a motion to authorize approval of appointment of city solicitor?
Yes, there is. I make a motion to authorize approval of appointment of city solicitor that it does hereby appoint Sean Kilkenny, who has learned in law and is a fully
Is there a motion to authorize approval of appointment of assistant city solicitor?
Yes, there is. I make a motion to authorize approval of appointment of assistant city solicitor, that it does hereby appoint Sean Kilkeny, who has learned in law and is a duly qualified member of the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania, and shall maintain an office in the City of Chester for term of four years, and until his successor is qualified, be and is hereby appointed to the position of assistant city solicitor, Department of Public Affairs. The assistant city solicitor shall receive a salary as provided in the twenty twenty-four budget. Do we have a second? I'm going to ask again. Do we have a second? Will that one die on the vine?
I make a motion that we approve Ken Schuster as a city solicitor, that does hereby appoint Kenneth R. Schuster, who has learned in law and is a duly qualified member of the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania, and shall maintain an office in the City of Chester for term of four years and until his successor is qualified, be and is hereby appointed to the position of city clerk, Department of Public Affairs. The solic, city solicitor, the Department of Public Affairs, the city solicitor shall receive a salary as provided in the twenty twenty-four budget.
Any questions? Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Let me just make sure, West was there? You second?
Yes.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
No.
Is there a motion to authorize approval of appointment of assistant city solicitor?
Yes, there is. I'll make a motion to authorize approval of appointment of assistant city solicitor, that it does hereby appoint Sean Kilkeny, who has learned in law and is a duly qualified member of the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania, and shall maintain an office in the City of Chester for term of four years, and until his successor is qualified, be and is hereby appointed to the position of assistant city solicitor, Department of Public Affairs. The assistant city solicitor shall receive a salary as provided in the twenty twenty-four budget. Do we have a second? All right, motion does not move forward.
I make a motion that we table the approval of assistant city solicitor, until further review of council.
I'm having a hard time down here.
First, second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Any comments? Any questions? Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson? Yes. Now, we're doing the actual, yes, and all right. West?
Yes. We're, we're voting on the
To table.
To table.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
No.
Is there a motion to authorize approval of appointment of deputy mayor for the City of Chester?
Yes, there is. I make a motion to authorize approval for the appointment of deputy mayor, that it does hereby appoint, my big sister, Council Lady Porsha West, as deputy mayor for the City of Chester to serve as presiding officer of council during any temporary absence of the mayor, serve as the city's representative at ceremonial occasions during any temporary absence of the mayor, at such times as the mayor may request and sign any acts of the majority of the city council when the mayor is unavailable. Do I have a second?
Second.
Praise God.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Because the next one is city clerk, am I reading the resolution? Um.
Next, because the city clerk is subject to this resolution, I will announce it. A motion to authorize approval of reappointment of the city clerk and reappointment of the acting city clerk. Is there such a motion?
Yes.
Motion made by?
Yes, the motion to authorize approval for a reappointment of city clerk and appointment of Okay, the motion to authorize approval for a reappointment of city clerk and appointment of acting city clerk, that it does hereby reappoint Candace Newsom as city clerk, Department of the Customs Finance, at the salary range as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Without moving on to the next motion, we need our acting city clerk.
Uh, for the record, the resolution should state after annual appropriation ordinance further that Joan Neal shall be, and she is hereby appointed as acting city clerk for the absence or inability of the city clerk to act in such capacity.
Are you making that motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Comments? I'm sorry.
It's all right. Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
We're at a time in the agenda where I get to appoint a police commissioner. This isn't the option. Okay, so I hereby appoint Steve Gretzky to the position of police commissioner. Read the whole piece and then Steve take the stage. It hereby appoint Steve Gretzky to the position of police commissioner, Chester Police Department, Department of Public Affairs, with a ninety day probation period effective today, January second, twenty twenty-four, and a salary range as provided in the annual appropriations ordinance. So you've got ninety days to prove yourself. Congratulations.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Council, I wish you the best of luck. Uh, I know I've worked for somebody in the past, I'm going to continue to give you my all, I still got a lot left in my gas tank. I wish to have my mom here, but my mom's extremely sick, extremely sick. Uh, you know, there's some people I want to give a shout out to, especially I see a big presence of, uh, William Penn up in here, much respect, a lot of you knew me from being a street cop, and also to everyone, uh, I appreciate it, and I'm going to continue to give you my all. Thank you, God bless.
Is there a motion to authorize approval to issue a request for proposal for the position of city solicitor and assistant city solicitor?
I'll make that motion to authorize approval to issue our RFP, request for proposal for position of city solicitor and assistant city solicitor, that it does authorize the proper city officials to prepare a request for proposal to solicit sealed proposals for professional legal services for the positions of city solicitor and assistant city solicitor.
I would like to make a motion to have
Hold on, we already have a motion. That's the second, we have to vote on that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Okay. I, and I hereby make a motion to have each council member appointed as, as a director to one of the, well, four remaining departments as set forth in Title III, Article one eleven of the Che, City of Chester's Administrative Code titled Council. The Chester Home Rule Charter, Section six oh three, Title Legislative Review, provides that at the annual organization meeting of the, of the Chester City Council, the mayor may assign to each council member a responsibility such as department head of one or more departments or agencies of the city government. It also provides that council shall act as the body in formulating policies of all departments of the city government, which shall be implemented through the City of Chester's Administrative Code. The Administrative Code provides that council may assign duties and responsibilities to officers and employees, and council shall have the power and authority and are charged with the duty of performing the duties which council has assigned to them. The Administrative Code further provides that directors of the departments are agents of council, and that pursuant to Section one eleven point oh four, the mayor has been designated as Director of Public Affairs. There is nothing in the Third Class City Code, Home Rule Charter, or Administrative Code of the City of Chester that precludes the council from acting to appoint council members as department heads
For grandstanding here, we may disagree, but the facts are the facts. I may, I chose not to. Council may, and they did it. So let's get rolling. It looks like our chief of staff has a comment.
I have, I do have comments. First of all, this is not a place to grandstand. We're supposed to be a team, we're supposed to be looking out for the citizens of this, of this city. We're supposed to be looking out for the citizens of this city, right? And as a body, everyone that took government understands government one oh one, where we have the legislative body, which is council, the legislative body enacts laws. Chief of staff, my job is to do operations. Just like Councilwoman West quoted, part of the part of the law, part of the charter. You see this big book here? This is the ordinance that the City of Chester elected to enforce since the charter was established, since the city was established. When I operate, I operate based on what's in this law that you all, the legislative body approved. Now, we can sit here and we can quote part of the law to you, and you only get a portion of it. So if you're going to quote the law, make sure you're quoting the whole entire part. And some of the problems we have here is this charter was inactive, and there's a lot of discrepancies within this charter, and it contradicts itself. In one state, it says that council may, it says the mayor may elect, and then in another part, it talks about directors. Now, I can sit here and read through this whole thing, or read through this whole thing, but I'm not going to do that. But I would tell you this, as long as I'm your chief of staff, I will follow the law that's in this book. I will not contradict it, I will not go contrary to it, I will follow what has been enacted. So if anybody's ever telling you that the chief of staff is not responding or not doing what he's supposed to do, I'm going to, I invite you into my office anytime you want, and we will sit down and look at this law. But that's what I follow. So when it comes to directorship, it contradicts itself. It says that one hand, they're, they are directors, and then on the other hand, it talks about making directors of departments, not talking about council, but other members that are directors. So that's how we're operating, but if anybody has any questions about what your chief of staff does, please come and sit, because I will operate in person.
And I have to say, we're, we're operating council members
We haven't voted, we haven't voted.
We're, we're, you know, I'm just saying, I'm putting it forward that we operate as directors as we always have been. And you know, Chief Whitehead, we, we, um, I've always been, you know, complying and working with you, my staff and I, you know, we, we enjoy working with you, so there's nothing ill, ill, or any puns against you, okay? But I'm saying we're using our authoritative, authoritative right to become directors of our departments, and that's what we want.
So, and that's fine, that's what you want, and I accept that, but also, when you talk about the ordinance, and again, I wouldn't be up here if my name wasn't mentioned up here as a chief of staff. So, we're going to talk about this. We want to read the powers and duties of what my job is.
I'm, I'm
Oh.
No, 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 say that for second. Say that for second. Yeah, say that for second.
I'm just making sure.
Say it for second.
The motion is on the floor?
Yes.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Of course not.
No.
All right, here's an exciting time for the City of Chester. It's an opportunity for you to witness and for what actually is going to take place, the swearing in of two new police officers.
All right.
I?
I.
Stand in name. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I do support
That I do support.
obey and defend
Obey and defend.
the Constitution of the United States of America
The Constitution of the United States of America.
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
and the Charter of the City of Chester
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
and that I will discharge the duties
And that I will discharge the duties.
of the office of police officer
Of the office of police officer.
with fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Michael Ramble, front and center. He's ready, let's go. All right, repeat after me. I?
I.
In your name. Michael Ramble. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support.
obey
Obey.
and defend the Constitution
And defend the Constitution.
of the United States of America
The United States of America.
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
and the Charter of the City of Chester
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
and that I will discharge the duties
And that I will discharge the duties.
of the office of police officer
Of the office of police officer.
with fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Michael Ramble, front and center. All right, repeat after me. I?
I.
In your name. Michael Ramble. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support.
obey
Obey.
and defend the Constitution
And defend the Constitution.
of the United States of America
The United States of America.
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
and the Charter of the City of Chester
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
and that I will discharge the duties
And I will discharge the duties.
of the office of police officer
Of the office of police officer.
with fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Turn around, dressed in gray for the City of Chester.
I just want to say thank you very much. I'm looking forward to starting my career in the great city of Chester. I'm very big with community policing, so I'm looking forward to that. I do have two young children of my own, so I'm very passionate about leaving here in Chester. I'm really looking forward to just getting out on the streets, engaging with the entire community. So we're looking forward to working with everyone, and you know, hopefully I support you guys.
Of course, I'd like to thank Mr. Gretzky, Major Black.
Of course, I'd like to thank Commissioner Gretzky, Major Blaswell, and the rest of the Commandant staff, as well as Mayor Roots and his council. I look forward to working on the streets of Chester, getting known to the community, and, um, speaking for the rest of us.
One thing I will say, we started this process a few months ago, and we had a total of seventeen possible applicants through the process, PT, the written exam, through background investigations. These two were left standing, which I commend them. Well, one thing I will tell you, I'm a second-generation police officer. Everyone knows my family from the city. The old history of the city was with policing, there was a lot of homegrown people from the City of Chester that were police officers. So speaking this out, we're going to test again. I plead with this community to get some of our youth, young men and women, to take this police test. I will put the time aside, whatever I need to do, PT, tutoring, anything I need possible to get you up here to serve this City of Chester, please. And I'm now based on K'Quan Davis, who takes a PT, please. Thank you.
Is there a sign-up sheet that's circulated for public comment?
No.
Where's the map?
Where's the map?
Well, I'm gonna say this. If not, stand in line if you want to make a public comment. You're going to be required to give your name and address. And you have three minutes. Because this was the reorganizational meeting, this is not a city council meeting per se. As much as possible, I can't tell you what to say, but as much as possible, let's keep the comments in regard to the reorganization. Maybe it's to thank or congratulate new council people, the ones that was appointed, police officers. But it's public comment, so I'm just making a little suggestion. But anyone who wants to make all the comment, stand in line, state your name, your address, and I guess I'm the timekeeper for now. One of you guys will be assigned timekeeper next meeting.
Good morning to everyone. Congratulations to our new council. My question is, I would like to know where the young man and young lady?
Give me one moment. I know who you are, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. Son, great Noah. My address is 1002 Highland Avenue here in the City of Chester. I saw. But I would like to know where these two new offices that have been voting in, what part of the City of Chester do they live in?
All right, here's what we're going to do. Moving forward. When we say public comment, it's public comment. It's not going to be question and answer. So if you have questions, we're gonna tell you that public comment is not the time to ask them. The person who can answer that question is here today, though, and that's our, our, our. Well, you're not going to get there. What I'm saying is, we're not going to answer that particular question in public, first of all. Secondly, what we're going to do moving forward in council meetings, I'm going to demand that our department heads, commissioners, and other important people be present so that if you do come here to have your questions asked by any or all departments that are represented in the city, they will be here to take your questions. But we are not going to use public comment time from here moving forward to answer questions. This is public comment only. Do you have a public comment?
I will come back afterwards and ask that question.
Good morning. I need a little tin. 330 West Light Street, Chester, PA. Good morning to our current mayor, Mr. Stefan Roots, and to our new council here. Councilwoman West, all of you, congratulations. We are so excited about the change that we are anticipating as residents here in Chester City. We understand that election processes are things that we go through all the time. And we are excited here as residents to get this change that we hope for. I want to say to the public today has demonstrated what democracy and what politics look like, okay? And sometimes it starts off, transition has its rough start. But I am glad today to say that I am proud of the council exercising, you know, what they know to be their rights. What we were concerned about as residents, we know that under the law, with the law, that the process that took place with the previous council, we were hoping that new council was not going to be punished for what old council did. I think it is proper to allow this new administration the opportunity to prove themselves, okay? And, you know, until otherwise. You mentioned yourself, Mr. Stefan Roots, that you are a rookie mayor as well as the council here. And so we are hoping that you guys are going to work together here, do what we need to do, okay? We're going to work through, you know, all these, you know, the things that we have to work through. And let's get this city on the right track and build a better Chester for our Chester city. And lastly, I think it seems, I know that you're transitioning, a lot of things that have to happen in this city. I believe that we have to start doing the right thing. There are laws. We do understand that in order for all of you to govern our city, you have to be residents, right? And so we want to demonstrate you guys doing the right thing, by making sure that we're doing the right thing. So eventually, that question that was asked, we have got to start doing what we need to do. That's going to help us build a better Chester, right? And helping to do our offices, and helping our city, okay? And those that are supposed to be here, and we're hoping that this mayor and council are going to make sure that we go on the right track and do the right thing in the city, and let's make Chester great together. Thank you for the panel today.
Good morning. My name is James Perrin, 105 Hazel Street, Hamburg, Pennsylvania. Hamburg, Pennsylvania.
All right, hold on. Unfortunately, for you, the only persons for now that are allowed to give public comment have to be city residents.
Are you sure? I have a word from the Lord that's of interest to you.
It's the first meeting of the year. Who wants to hear from the Lord? Come on, let's go.
So in my devotion this morning, I said, "Lord, what do you want to say?" So here's what he had to say in 1 Timothy, Chapter 2. "Therefore I exert, first of all, that supplications and prayers and intercessions and giving of thanks be made for all men and all women who are in authority." See, you have a big part in what's going on here now and in the future. "For kings and for all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life if all God will wish."
And I just would like to thank everybody that's here today. And, um, because usually I attend almost every council meeting that the city has, and usually there's like only like ten people in there. So I'm looking forward to everybody coming back and trying to support our mayor and our council people and the people that were appointed. I look forward to seeing them soon, because there are council meetings coming up. I just don't want you to forgive them, you know what I mean? Because being here, saying what you have to say, makes a difference, you know? It makes a big difference. Our city is like a second chance city. A lot of people don't know, but I spent like over twenty years in jail. But yet I'm here, and I changed my life, and I believe that. And we get going forward. There's going to be a lot of positive changes in this city. Because Chester is a safe and honest city. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Chaplain Sir Dennis. I'm going to ask our chaplains and clerks to please stand. Seems like there was a huge thing today. I want to congratulate our mayor and our newly-appointed council person and our attorney-council person. We would like to let you know, as chaplains, that we are here to support. I like the idea, even in terms of the prayer we've offered, to be a part of that. We would like to be a part of that. And to those who would like to be able to start it today at 2:00 PM, we will be outside of the Chester Police Department, and we will be praying at 2:00 PM to 2:24. Please join us. Congratulations and congratulations.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mayne Kane. I live at 802 Barkway Street in the City of Chester. And my comment is this. It seems to me that nothing's going to change.
Yeah, same.
It seems to me that the new council is not going to work with the mayor. The mayor's not going to work with the council. And I'm talking for me. I don't think that we needed to have an outburst. I'm happy that we have a new administration. I was hoping that this administration was going to work together and change the conditions in Chester.
Kind of where I'm standing is where she just left off at. I've lived in Chester for seventy years. My name is Hilda Campbell. I passed it in the United Methodist Conference. So I haven't been in the City of Chester doing leadership, but I've been on the conference level doing leadership. And the one thing I want y'all to understand is that we all have individual ideas. And like, some things happened when I was doing construction. Everybody has a one's and a nay's. And so that means everybody has opinions. But if we're going. That's construction. But if we're going to do things that's going to make things better for the entire City of Chester, we can't fight one another from the time the sun rises to the time the sun sets. Good leadership means we come together as the leaders at the table, and we work together to iron out our differences, to discover what's good and what's not so good, to come to an agreement, to say that this would be the best for the citizens of the City of Chester. Not because those of us who have good jobs, who have had good incomes, can dwell over the others who have not seemed to make it. Because the goal is to make sure everybody makes it. Everybody wants a decent meal. Everybody wants a clean house. Everybody wants to be able to do some fun things every now and then. And in order for that to happen, those with have to acknowledge that those without bear some consideration that many forget about. And so I want y'all to understand, it's been a long time since I've been to a city council meeting. But because I am.
So we thank you to Ms. Portia West for being the remedy. Thank you to newly-mayor Stefan Roots for just doing what some thought probably was impossible. You sat here, and now you're there. Uh, to my cousin, I'm godly proud of you. To Fred Green, to you, young man, I know your family. I just want to say godly proud of you. But let me just say this one thing. No one person can do everything.
That's right.
So it takes us to work together. We're better together. And there were some hidden gems in our community that we don't know about. Everybody knows that, you know, we have certain people in the forefront, but you don't know until you go and see about it. All of that, the days of people saying, "Well, if you know somebody that you can get in", well, how about getting to know somebody so that we can all be a part of it? I love you all. Continue to do what God wants and not what we want.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Karen Kazim, State Representative. Karen Kazim, 1213 Johnson Street. First and foremost, Happy New Year's to everyone. Congratulations to mayor, council. I just wanted to make the comment and say I look forward to working with each and every one of you, Councilwoman West, although we've already started that. Um, but I just want to leave each and every one of you with just remembering your father said it, which was, "Trust God." So in other words, the residents come first. Remember that. But before you make any decision, you speak to your Lord first.
Yes.
You're not man. You're Lord. And you walk in with dignity and integrity. That's the main thing. Debate the issues, not each other. Debate the issues, not each other.
Amen.
So in other words, we see a lot of homeless population out there. Seniors need us right now. Our children need us right now. It's a lot of things we got to pick up. That's the issues we have to stay focused on. So let's get that done together. I'm going to hold y'all to it just as much as I expect y'all to hold me to. So let's work together. Let's put any egos aside. This is a new time. It's 2024. We always said, "What a new year, new us," all of that, right? We're wrong, right? So let's go on together, and let's make sure that the people are put first. So remember, debate the issues, not each other. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tucker Rocky, 302 West Mallory Street. Uh, my family's been in Chester for around 200-plus years now. Long, long time. Uh, through all the different seasons, through the years of success and growth, uh, through the years when things took a downturn, and now a lot of hope. I have a lot of hope for our city. I have a lot of hope for the city council, for our newly-elected mayor. I congratulate all of you. I voted for all of you, so I look forward to seeing what you're going to do. However, there is a, there was a moment in this meeting that disturbed me. And the moment was where we said, "This is the first time we've done something different." And that's the problem. Maybe we need to do more different. You see, doing things the way that we've done them has gotten us to this point. But I have a firm belief that when you operate in humility, it's not that you exercise your right, it's that you do what's right. Yes, we have rights. But how are we doing what is right, what is best, what best serves our community? Not just because it's what we've always done, or what we have the right to do.
Yes.
But how do we best humbly serve every single young man, young woman, elderly man, elderly woman, and everyone in between in humility, saying, "Listen, I know I have the right, but I want to lay aside my right because I know that we have a community of people who are talented, who are inspired, who are motivated, who are being led to step into positions of leadership and opportunity." And so I encourage all of you, this is going to be a difficult time of transition. But we all have the same goal, right? We want a new tomorrow. We want a new city. We want clean streets. We want a great education system. We want everyone to feel safe and feel like they have a future. You know, I work with young people in our art programs in the city, and they have imagination, and they have hope. And you are the ones that are going to set the foundation for everyone else in this community to do what they're called to do. So I encourage you to do that. I urge you towards humility, which I know each of you want to carry, as you also have your positions and savings. But I thank you for the work that you're going to do. We're all here to encourage and support you, and maybe.
Our president, I congratulate. My name is Captain Paul Justice. I live in 216 West 24th Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. I've been in 16 for eight years. 216 West 24th. 216 West 24th. I just wanna say what's on my heart. A scripture, I'm not reading in front of you, but I think I have enough of it to quote. Second Chronicles, seventh chapter, says, "If my people, who are called by my name, will come to this and pray, seek my face, turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear their name." That's what we need to do. Being an official of Chester, being a mayor, a city council is a, is a job that God is gonna hold us accountable for. We have to be accountable for praying for them. God said to pray for those who are in leadership position over us. We are gonna be held accountable. God is the, we said we trust in God and believe in God. We have to mean it in our hearts and do what we are directed to do according to the word of God. So God bless you and hope to build a church for you, and pray, and sit down to thank you for this city.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Pastor Everett, from Chester born and raised. As someone would say, homebrew. But as I look around the room, and as I listen, and don't get me wrong, I'm excited about what I hear. But let's be all inclusive. Assalamu alaikum. And I greet my Muslim brothers and sisters with the greeting words of peace and a paradise, because we all in this together. I, I congratulate council, Fred, congratulations. I watched Fred grow up, running into churches. Here comes this little boy again, and there was always somebody following Fred. Fred's part. I see you over there. But, but I'm gonna say this, we're gonna take away your nickname and use your real name, your government name, 'cause you ain't juicy no more. So we're gonna start using our government names as we stand up as men in the city of Chester. But I'm excited about it, and I'm excited about what's gonna happen in the economic foundation, 'cause I'm a businessman. And, and I wanna see our young people learn the art of being entrepreneurs. I work with an organization called Hope Point. We're located at 9th and Curling. Got all the space you need, the old Compton daycare. Come on, Cory, after you remember. So I'm excited about working with council. And I see young guys up there, and it gives me hope, 'cause I love this city. People be like, "Why are you coming back to Chester?" I'm also a United Methodist pastor. I've been in the southwest Philadelphia, but this is home. And I'm always be involved in what takes place here in the city of Chester, and as I embrace the new mayor, the new council, words everybody in the Holy Scripture, "Behold how good and how pleasant it is for brotherly love together in unity. It is like the precious ointment upon the head that ran down upon the beard, even Aaron's beard; and as a dew of harm, and as a dew that extended upon the mountains of Zion. For there the Lord commanded blessing, even life."
Are there any other people in the public? Three minutes. Make sure we give a name and address.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. My name is T.O. Stockman. I'm there at 209 East 13th Street, Chester. I lived there in my whole life. Um, I just wanna be brief. I'm a lifelong resident here. Uh, released from prison a few years ago, and when I did, I came with the knowledge that we needed to make a change for our young folks. Me and my partner Cory Long, you know what I'm saying, we have a gun violence program, a G-bye program, gun violence intervention, the power program, which we work with the youth of this city. Also, I'm on security, bad, 'cause the enterprises were a consulting firm, a proud company. And in that capacity, I've worked with most of you who are sitting here, to help you sit where you're sitting, and to get elected in these offices that y'all hold. I say that to say this: I didn't work with y'all for this outcome. This isn't what I envisioned. When we all came together with collective mind that said, "We need a change in our city, that we were gonna remove that element that was controlling our city, and we were gonna implement a new element." Implementing that new element, I thought we was gonna come in here, and we was gonna work together, we was gonna come together, and we was gonna put our city forward. My man Cory always tell me, because I tend to correct people publicly. I tend to correct people that work for us and work with us in the moment, in front of people. And my man tells me, and he inspires me all the time, he told me that, "Bro, don't have a public conversation." All right, ten seconds. Don't have a public conversation with someone, you can do a protest. These things that went on today could have been held to protest. When y'all, when y'all come before us, I would, I would hope that y'all come before us with y'all decisions made all on the same page, and tell us what we're gonna do. Not that we're gonna discuss these issues and these motions in front of everybody.
Rain, light, and the sound, 811 East 27th Street. I'd like to leave you with this: The city has great potential, and there is always hope. And the last thing I'd like to say: Less personalities, more principles. Less, um, more cooperation, less competition. That's it.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. If you're gonna make a public comment, come to the mic. State your name and address. You have three minutes. This will be the last comment.
Uh, the community also to be able to plant the seed of, not just score, plant the seed positivity, delinquency in the right direction. It's on my heart, and I only get interested, woo, I'm from Philadelphia originally. I've been here almost four years. I've been married to Mr. Roots for almost four years. And I feel as though that God had placed me here and with him for a time at this.
Miss, Miss Roots, you have ten seconds.
Before you guys leave, just in a morning, every morning you get up, thank God for this feeling of, in your right state of mind, and pray before you come into this building. And be working for the people, and put a scripture in your heart. How in your heart, so we won't sin again.
Your time. First time I was ever officially allowed to cut my life off. I think that's it, right? Well, listen, I, I think we've already proven that public comment can be effective. That was amazing. Thank you, guys, for sharing on this first, not council meeting, but reorganizational meeting of the year. I think we all got something out of every comment that was shared today, and we got a lot in because we stuck to, to three minutes. So that's gonna be the, uh, the charge moving forward. Now it's time for us to talk. It's time for us to give comments as mayor and council. I asked my deputy mayor here, what order should we go in so that, uh, it made sense that we're gonna start? With council leading, give it.
Give some.
What did I say? Give some, I'm sorry.
I wanna thank everyone who came out to vote for me, um, in the primaries and in the general. I appreciate each and every one of you for the prayers. Incessary is necessary, so I thank you, Ms. Flag, and the other women, I don't know your name, I'm sorry, for praying for us, because prayer does work. I want you guys to know that I, I love the city of Chester. And while everyone else was moving away, I moved back by the word of God. And God's, uh, God is who I serve first, then the people, okay? I want you to know that I will serve you with dignity and integrity. And, uh, we need all of you to become involved, because inclusion is everything. I'm one person. I can't do it all, but together we can make a great change. Thank you for everyone that's supported me. Thank you Cory for supporting me, uh, for believing in me. But most of all, I thank my mom. Where's she at? You, you birthed greatness. You birthed greatness. And God has honored your prayers. And I'm standing here in the city of Chester as a councilwoman because of you. So I love you, mommy. I appreciate you, and I wanna not only make God proud, but you proud too.
Yeah, so I just wanna actually stand up as well. So I wanna thank the community.
So excuse me, councilman, it's better if you use the microphone, because I'm using a tape recorder, and I wanna be able to hear what you're saying on the tape later.
Yes, ma'am. So I wanna thank, um, not just the community, but mayor-elect, Mr. Roots, and city council for having me here. As I said, I plan to serve my community, and I wanna thank everybody for supporting me and those who didn't support me. Thank you for making, for pushing me, my competitive spirit. Like I said, from being from Chester, I am very competitive to be a better man. This competition is that, is just what it is, a competition. But guess what? I look around this room, and I see bright young men, that, bright young men that we all mentioned, that I can work with, that I can actually learn something from. I'm not too proud, I'm not too proud to admit that. I have nothing but the utmost respect for everybody in my community. And if you have something to offer this community, please bring it to, bring it forward to not just myself and the city council, because we're here, like I said, to serve you all, and I'm here to learn. I don't know everything. I don't plan to, to make it seem like I know everything. I'm here to be a humble, public servant and listen to the people that have come before me. So if anybody sees me sitting here in this seat today, please put me to the side, my supporters or not, and let me know how I could improve to take care of my community that I care about. So again, I just wanna say thank you.
Um, first and foremost, we give honor to God, who's allowed us to be here today. And thank each and every one of you. Thank you to all my family, all my friends. And, uh, I'm looking forward to serving the city of Chester. Uh, many of you know me since I was a little boy, and I've always wanted a seat at the table. I got that seat at the table. While I'm at this table, I will always put my integrity, my morals, my values, and principles first. And I look forward to leading and working together with this mayor and council, under the understanding that not one person can do it all. We must work together. For one woman, one man, we can't control the show. We must work together as a collective legislative and administrative body to move this city forward. And that's what I plan to do. But I cannot do it without the help of these residents, because we work for you. Let me say that again. We work for you. And that is what I'm, that's what we plan to do, is work on behalf of the residents to make this city thrive again, to make Chester a better place to work, play, live, and worship. And that is my promise. And as I said when I was running for office, I wanna restore hope in city government. But in order for us to restore hope in city government, we have to work together. We gotta believe in city government. City government gotta work together in order for us to restore hope to the residents of this city. So, you can count on me to be open, honest, and transparent. I promised that during the campaign, and I'm promising that to you now that I am sitting here as city councilman, Fred Green. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I wanna thank the mayor and council for allowing me this opportunity to be your deputy mayor. And mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm going to work with you to make this city better, okay? You know, we're not gonna always get along, none of us. We're gonna have differing opinions. But we will come together and work for the good of the people here in Chester. And, uh, that's our primary concern, is that we're more effective in the way that we do things so that we can better serve the community. And, uh, we're gonna work with all of our partners, all of you, okay? And, uh, we, we know we have a lot of work. We're just asking you to have faith in us and give us the opportunity, you know? We may not know everything, but we're open and willing to learn. I look forward to learning from our chief of staff. He's, he's a brilliant man, you know? And, um, I, I'm looking forward to working with the new administration. And, um, I have a, um, note that I wanna read from former councilwoman Elizabeth Williams, who was a great councilperson. She loved this city tremendously, especially the seniors, the children. You know, her heart was always with the heart of the community, always thinking of you and loving you, and wanting to make sure that people recognize our city for what it is, a great city, of the great city of Chester. And she also worked to set history straight too, you know, about who landed here, you know? Wasn't in Philadelphia, it was right here in Chester. And she wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. And she was able to go to the state house, and they recognized her there for her work and efforts here in Chester. Um, she says, "To the thirty-two thousand and more residents and the great citizens of Chester, Pennsylvania, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to serve as your councilperson for twelve years." Thank you, councilperson Elizabeth Williams. Let's give a big hand for that. Again, our commitment is to work together. You're not gonna see us up here fighting all the time. We have our differences, but, you know, we're gonna be able to work together. So I don't want you to worry about that, you know? Mayor, I don't want you to worry. We're gonna be working together.
You gotta start somewhere, right? And you guys have witnessed the starting point. Watch us. In four years, we're gonna get this, we're gonna be where we need to be. But we gotta start somewhere. Um, I wrote a few comments down this morning. Well, I typed a few comments down, so I'm gonna read from my screen here. I kinda knew how things were gonna go today. It was, it was pretty much a foregone conclusion, so really no surprises. I, uh, was toying with what this was, a reorganization meeting, and I was sitting home last night saying, "This is gonna be a disorganization meeting," and it kinda turned out like that. But, uh, I, I wanna share a couple of comments I've heard about the city of Chester. I had the pleasure of sitting with the past president of Chaney University, Aaron Walton Murphy. He is still president. I'm sorry if I said he was the former. Sat in his presence home with his wife full day. It was, it was really a privilege and a pleasure. I told him about the fine history of Chester and Chaney University, and how so many teachers went through Chaney University, just so he knew that history, and, you know, for the most part, he did. I said, I asked him if he had ever been through the city of Chester, and he says, "Yeah, when I drive through Chester, it appears to me as though it's a city where time has stopped." And I think about that clock over in Deshawn that stood there for so long where time had stopped. Well, we, that, that, if you haven't noticed, that, that clock has been knocked down. Clock has been knocked down. Just last night, I was on, uh, I was in Philadelphia, met a guy that's, that I'll be working with pretty closely, and he surprised me by saying that he's worked with many Chester people in the past, mostly residents, no, no elected officials or anything like that. But what he said of Chester was that Chester, no, he says, "People in Philadelphia recognize Chester as a place where time has stopped." I was amazed that two people from two different walks of life, literally six years apart, had that same opinion of Chester. It's a place where time has stopped. I say that Chester's a very fertile land, but not too many good seeds have been planted lately. And that's the direction we wanna go, is to plant some new seeds. You guys voted for change, right? When I voted, when I voted, when I ran for, for council, and I went out there, me and my wife, the campaign in a box herself, uh, sitting around trying to get signatures of people who would support to put me on the ballot over and over, and I mean, I can't say how many times, the same thing came out of people's minds, "It's time for a change, it's time for a change, it's time for a change." So much so that became the slogan of our campaign, "It's time for a change." A lot has to change, and much of it can't be done incrementally. We can't be... We can't be picking and choosing, we have to break some eggs to make an omelet here. We're going to have to break some things and start over. Change is what you voted for, change is what you expect, change is what you're going to get. People always want to look for elected officials during campaign season to have a platform. And usually the platform has to do with, in the city of Chester, you know, when I stopped at forty-six things that I saw needed to be done, I had to really say, what in my heart is going to be my number one thing that I want to see amongst all the things that need to be addressed here in Chester? And the number one thing was to fix city hall. Fix city hall. Once we fix how this operation works in here with our employees, our staff, our resources, our trucks, our weed whackers, our, our plows, all that stuff, how we answer phones, address emails, deal with the public, that will filter down into providing the services that you guys require, need and deserve out in the city. So that's what we're going to do, or that's my mission in particular, is to fix city hall. How do we do that? We hire good people. So I will say in the last year, year and a half, some great individuals have been hired here in the city of Chester to help move the city of Chester forward. I almost feel sorry for past administrations for not having the talent that we're starting to amass here to make Chester a better place. I interviewed the police officers who were sworn in today. There were seven, one of them decided not to show the night before, the other six showed up. We chose four, two made it, two made it through. I've interviewed, first my project manager, come on out here, Ty. I want you to see our new project manager. We have a new CFO, chief of staff, um, probably name a couple of other positions. We just interviewed for a new planner. This guy is out of this world, I hope he accepts the job. That's the type of thing we need to see to fix city hall. Transitioning new, newly elected council people, I, I wanted, I wanted them to have a different experience than I had when I came on board on council. I got nothing, okay? So I said to myself, there's no way I'm going to allow councilman Green, council lady. Gibson. I don't want to get that wrong again, but she made me that, oh. So we had, I, I, you know, I wrote down here, I think I remember like five sessions that I wanted to get together, give them a lay of the land, let them know what a third class code is, administrative code, uh, city charter. Those things are really arcane, old, uh, as Chief Lightner says, they don't even, not, they, they contradict themselves in many, many places, many times they have to be interpreted. But many times in the city, we don't even follow the code, you know? We just do what we do to get things through. But it's important to have some basis for what you're going to get into when you do the job. So I'm going to list like five, five, five field trips that we had together leading up to today. The first one that I remember was on Rainy Street. It was a ribbon cutting down at the Philadelphia Union. Uh, it was a great opportunity to meet and chat with the brass at the Philadelphia Union. They were really happy with the work that the city accomplished to help them make that really great entranceway that goes from two ninety-one to the front of the stadium. We were joined that day by the former mayor of Pittsburgh, Tom Murphy, who, uh, thanks to some people in this room, has connected us to Chester. He and the city of Pittsburgh has helped turn that around when he was mayor and he wants to share, you know, with us some of his expertise. We went to lunch, we had a great time. That was, I think, our first time together as, uh, you know, to, to try to transition the council people in. The second time we met with the receiver to learn what they wanted as councilperson. So the question was asked by the receiver, like, tell us three things as councilpersons you would like to do, like to see accomplished of people who I was selecting to be my replacement on council, to be my solicitor, to meet my advisor. We had one other person there. And at lunch, uh, that's when things started to get real between us. That was really the really first meeting where we kind of saw where each other were. When I woke up this morning, I opened up the, uh, I turned on the news. It was Fox News and they were talking about Sherrell Parker and they were talking about connections. They were talking about her history in the state house and the people that she knows and the people that she connected to. And I, I just kind of compare that to that meeting where I wanted, you know, the new council people to know who I was connected with and the people that I wanted to bring in city government. Uh, when we walked away from that meeting, we kind of came to the conclusions that not yet, they don't seem to connect with connections, but we're going to get there. For instance, the solicitor, who I thought would be a very easy person to appoint and get started here, just as one example, you know, we know the governor of the state or his name is Governor Shapiro to all of us. To him, his name is Josh. To have somebody that would work this closely with us, who knows the governor as Josh at a time when we're in receivership is really important. But it didn't happen. The next meeting, we met at Panera Bread. I didn't have a lot of time, but we realized that we needed to smooth out some things. So we brought in Mr. Smooth himself, Cory Long. First thing out of Cory Long's mouth was, please, don't make this first meeting up. Just go smoothly through this first meeting. So as we can see, we didn't quite accomplish that, but like I said, we know where our baseline is, we know where we need to improve. And then our last meeting was with the receiver again, the chief financial officer and a Widener professor over at Widener. It was our last time together, it was the week before Christmas. What I wanted to do is share with everybody the, at the time, draft budget so they can see what a budget document looks like. I wanted to share the organizational chart. But that didn't happen because the former mayor didn't think it was proper that the council people should see those documents before they took office. But then as you heard today, I'm called the dictator. And I'm totally going with tradition, you know? I think I'm being called the dictator because I, in the history of this city and most other cities, when someone moves on, they identify someone to replace them. So an example was here, two examples I can give you is Mayor Pledge. When Mayor Pledge won the seat to go to senate, he said, police chief or commissioner at the time, Wendell Butler will be my replacement. There was no question, I mean, it's kind of the given. When councilman, Councilman Nafis Nichols became the chief financial officer of the city of Chester, Mayor Kerplin appointed William Morgan to replace him and council just went along because that's what you're going to assume is going to happen. But we do have a city charter, we do have an administrative code, which does allow other things to happen which occurred today. The reason, well, I'm going to say this past weekend was interesting, these past few weeks have been interesting in trying to accommodate the fact that we wanted to accommodate other opinions. I want to give a few thank yous out here. Number one to my solic, well, I guess our solicitor in Schuster, uh, the solicitor I was trying to appoint, Sean Kilkeny, uh, Chief Lightner, um, uh, former Mayor Kerplin. All these guys, I mean, they were on the phones going back and forth and back and forth. I wasn't even involved, okay? I wasn't even involved, wasn't asked to be involved. But they got it together, we stumbled through it today. What's done is done. But it really didn't have to be that way. We started off awkwardly. I don't know, I'm, I'm a little different, maybe because I'm older and we're dealing with younger, younger people here. I, I have to acknowledge that fact, you know, many of them are younger than my children. And we think differently, we behave differently. When I was thirty years old, I had no intentions of ever being in government. That wasn't even on my mind. When I was thirty years old, I was an executive director at Philadelphia Gas Works, being a businessman. That's what I always wanted to do, that's what I was doing. Since that time, I've been amassing, you know, contacts and, and things that all come to be very valuable at this time that we can use now. One of the things that the councilpeople elect wanted to do was to be involved in a lot of meetings. But until you're actually sworn in as councilpeople, you're not councilpeople. I'm telling you, it was a little awkward seeing you guys walk into your offices today when you're not councilpeople, but it happened. No one kicked you out, no one, no one said it was wrong. I'm going to close on this. You guys voted for change, that's what I'm here to do. We're going to figure out how to get things changed around here. But one of the things that I found out is a trigger of mine, is someone telling me that's not the way we've always done it. I honestly might seek therapy so that I just don't go off when I hear this because it's not a good thing to do. We're going to move forward though. We're going to move forward. We're going to move forward. Check the schedule of future council meetings because you will see that there are a lot of night meetings that will be held this year. The schedule is already on the website, chestercity.com. We want you to be here. There's an opportunity for you to be here at night for those of you who say you work during the day. We're, we had a miscommunication today and we couldn't livestream. That's really unfortunate because I wish the community could have seen this meeting. All future council meetings will be livestreamed. We've got a big meeting this afternoon at two, for those of you who are not going to lunch on council, I invite you to join that meeting. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
Mayor, I, I did want to address the audience as the elected controller. Um, I know that the meeting has adjourned and I'm not going to hold you because I know that you guys have been here for a long time. But I just want to thank you all for coming out, I want to thank you all for voting for me. I want you to expect full financial transparency from the council chambers when it comes to our accounting and financing for the city of Chester. This is not my first time, uh, being in this capacity. This is my first time being the elected controller, but I was deputy controller prior to that. So I do come with an extensive amount of knowledge as to what is happening, what should be happening and how we can be better to be transparent, more transparent for our community. So again, I thank you, have a wonderful rest of the day. And we look forward to seeing you back here next Wednesday, council.